For our Tuesday, October 26, 2021, regular board meeting, we'll begin with our Pledge of Allegiance.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Good evening. Nice to see everyone here. This meeting is a meeting of the school board in public for the purpose of conducting school corporation business, and is not considered a public community meeting. There will be time for public participation as indicated on the agenda. All board members were provided with background information to the various items on the agenda in preparation of this meeting. Our meeting is being livestreamed, and we do have public comment at the end of the meeting. Anyone who would like to address the board, there are public comment forms up here near Attorney Elwood. Please fill one out in its entirety and return it to the board table, and we will talk about public comments at that moment in time of the meeting. So to begin with, adjustments to the agenda by the board. There was an adjustment. Approval to advertise for E-rate bidding was added to the new business, which we'll get to a little bit later. Is there anything else, any other adjustments by the board to the agenda? Okay. First, we have our superintendent's consent agenda. We just got our personnel report for October 26, 2021, our claims report for October 26, 2021, and our facility use request report. We have a motion to approve the superintendent's consent agenda.
Make a motion.
Second.
We have a motion and a couple of seconds. Any discussion? Hearing on call, roll please.
Trustee Finley.
Yes.
Trustee Vasquez.
Yes.
Trustee Maleta.
Yes.
Trustee Williams, yes. Trustee Wilkie.
Yes.
Next up, we have our board's consent agenda, which have the minutes of our discussion meeting on October the 4th and minutes of the executive session on October the 20th. Do we have a motion to approve the board's consent agenda?
I make a motion to approve.
Second.
We have the motion and second. Any discussion? Hearing on call, roll please.
Trustee Vasquez.
Yes.
Trustee Maleta.
Yes.
Trustee Williams, yes. Trustee Wilkie.
Yes.
Trustee Finley.
Yes.
Okay, we'll move on to board development. Are there any reports from the board?
I have a couple of reports.
Yes, please.
From the Porter Township Food Pantry. I attended the meeting last week, and the report is that it had two tag days. The one in Ogden Dunes, and I believe I reported that last time, but I just want to repeat it. The total amount that was collected was $1,809 and 286 pounds worth of food items. Then on September 18th, there was a second tag day at Streck's on Central Avenue. The amount that was collected was $1,417.66 and 1,043 pounds of food items. So in addition to that, during the month of September, $6,797.97, that amount was collected from donations and contributions from businesses and community members, and a total of 10,368 pounds of food and other items were collected. So a special thank you to the Food Pantry for collecting this money and servicing our community. In preparation for Thanksgiving, there will be quite a few turkeys that will be available for pickup, and as well as baskets. So on the 17th, 15th, 16th to 17th, the turkeys will be available for pickup, and in the following week, additional items for Thanksgiving dinners will be available. We also discussed how a Melissa Johnson from our schools, at the high school, she's working on a food pantry from the students for family members. So the Food Pantry donated, just to help get started, $1,000 so that they can get rid, you know. So we thank the Board of Directors and those volunteers who donated all of that time and additional funding to help the students, to help our community members. So that's great.
Maybe it'd be cool to have Melissa come to a meeting and tell us how she's doing with that and any volunteers that she's not working with her.
Yes. And another reminder that if anyone here knows anyone, or you would need additional support during these holidays, referrals are for the Food Pantry. You can call 219-762-1623, and the new office is located at 3590 Willow Creek, which is north of the Porter County Government Center. You could also find out that information on their Facebook page on their website. Also with the Education Foundation, different fundraisers are being discussed and planned. T-shirts are going to be sold. The 50/50 Club that they have sponsored over the years is going to be changed to probably just a raffle. Major Saver, which is a fundraiser, the kickoff date is November the 9th, and the board is interested in recruiting new members to serve on this board. So if you know of anyone, or you are interested in volunteering and being part of this board, which is the Education Foundation Board, please check their Facebook page for more information. There will be a press release that will be coming out soon in order to recruit more members and volunteers. Thank you.
Very good. Thank you. Are there any other board reports? Okay, we move on. We do not have any old business. We have new business, though. Item 8.01, we have the acceptance of the High Ability Grant Funds.
This grant was written to support the implementation of assessments needed to identify our high ability students, and also support the professional development and curricular planning for our high ability programs throughout the district. The Indiana Department of Education did approve our grant proposal in the amount of $56,464.
Very good. Do we have a motion to approve the High Ability Grant Funds?
Make a motion to approve.
Second.
We have a motion, second. Any discussion?
Just one question. What determines the amount of money we get? Is it the number of kids that are getting this high ability? How is that funding determined?
Let me double check that, and I will add it to your update.
Okay, thank you. People are curious about that one. Thank you.
Yeah.
Good question. Thank you. Any other questions or discussion?
I have a question.
Go ahead.
In my experience, second grade, what grade levels were involved?
For determining high ability?
Yes.
We determine high ability entering kindergarten, entering third grade, entering sixth grade, entering high school. Now, we can make adjustments as necessary deemed by assessment information. Of course, students moving into the district from other district recommendation, but those are when we do our large-scale assessments throughout the district where we are providing with this program the need for the assessments.
Thank you. Any other questions or discussion? Hearing on call, roll please.
Trustee Maleta.
Yes.
Trustee Williams, yes. Trustee Wilkie.
Yes.
Trustee Finley.
Yes.
Trustee Vasquez.
Yes.
Okay, next we have a series of resolutions as it pertains to our 2022 budget. The first one, item 8.02, we have the approval to adopt Resolution R16-2021, adopt the bus replacement plan for budget year 2022. Do we have a motion to approve?
Make a motion to approve.
Second.
We have a motion, second. Any discussion? Call, roll, please.
Trustee Williams, yes. Trustee Wilkie.
Yes.
Trustee Finley.
Yes.
Trustee Vasquez.
Yes.
Trustee Maleta.
Yes. Item 8.03, approval to adopt Resolution R17-2021, the Capital Projects Fund Plan for Budget Year 2022. Do we have a motion to approve?
Make a motion.
Second.
We have a motion and second. Any discussion? Call, roll, please.
Trustee Wilkie.
Yes.
Trustee Vasquez.
Yes.
Trustee Finley.
Yes.
Trustee Vasquez.
Yes.
Trustee Maleta.
Yes.
Trustee Williams, yes.
Item 8.04, approval to adopt Resolution R18-2021 for appropriations and tax rates for the 2022 school budget. Do we have a motion to approve?
I make a motion. I make a motion to adopt the Resolution R18-2021.
A second.
We have the motion and second. Any discussion? Hearing on call, roll, please.
Trustee Finley.
Yes.
Trustee Vasquez.
Yes.
Trustee Maleta.
Yes.
Trustee Williams, yes. Trustee Wilkie.
Yes.
Next, we have item 8.05, approval to adopt Resolution R19-2021 to transfer from Education Fund to the Operations Fund. This transfer would be, Porter Township School Corporation will transfer up to the total amount of $6,900,000 during the 2022, from the Education Fund to the Operations Fund to cover expenditures that are not allocated to student instruction and learning under Indiana Code 20-42.5. Do you have a motion to approve?
President, Maleta, may I add something here? I did wanted to share with the board that on Friday, October 22nd, Mr. Grant and I did receive information regarding the 15% of the total revenue deposited into our Education Fund from the school corporation during the calendar year for that six-month span of time that we've had so far for this calendar year. And as you know, we can transfer up to that 15% without being on what is considered a list of, I guess, excessive transfer. And our current Education Fund transfer percentage for this sixth month is 13.34%. So we are beneath that 15% threshold so that we can operate the district, of course, fully knowing that the operations for the district that we're talking about are district security, custodial, maintenance, those things that we cannot do without. But I just think it's worth mentioning as we're talking about any type of transfer out of education. Mr. Grant and I also spoke along with Dr. Stevens, and we also anticipate that when we have the full year review, that it will be less than the 13.34% that we have currently.
And to clarify, then, so the state does expect you to take up to 15%
Correct.
From this fund of
Correct, absolutely.
To the educational, to the operational fund.
Mm-hmm.
And we're under that, the 13.2. Thank you. Do we have a motion to approve?
Make a motion to approve.
Second.
Any further discussion? Hearing on call, roll, please.
Trustee Vasquez.
Yes.
Trustee Maleta.
Yes.
Trustee Williams, yes. Trustee Wilkie.
Yes.
Trustee Finley.
Yes.
Next, we have item 8.06, approval to adopt Resolution R20-2021, financial goals. Do we have a motion to approve?
Make a motion to approve the Resolution R20-2021.
Second.
We have the motion and the second. Any discussion? Call, roll, please.
Trustee Maleta.
Yes.
Trustee Williams, yes. Trustee Wilkie.
Yes.
Trustee Finley.
Yes.
Trustee Vasquez.
Yes.
And finally, we have item 8.07, approval to advertise for E-rate bidding category two, infrastructure equipment.
I appreciate the board's flexibility in adding this to the agenda this evening just for the ability to seek your approval to advertise for the bids. This will be the switches and modules to go into the data closets for connectivity to complete our five-year plan that was set in place in 2017 for our infrastructure closets, to be updated with our needed equipment, and also our access points inside all of our buildings to be replaced. They are six-plus years old, and we're moving to a Wi-Fi six unit, which will be better for our students and staff connecting to their devices, and of course, to our internet, and moving to a more robust device system in our gyms and the pool area for connectivity. And this is just request to advertise for bids.
Very good. Do we have a motion to approve the request to advertise for the E-rate bidding?
Make a motion to approve.
Second.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any discussion? You call, roll, please.
Trustee Williams, yes. Trustee Wilkie.
Yes.
Trustee Finley.
Yes.
Trustee Vasquez.
Yes.
Trustee Maleta.
Yes. Okay, now we'll move on to our superintendent reports. Dr. Alanis.
Dr. Stevens took one item off of my to-do list. He said that the high ability dollars is set on a base amount by the IDOE, and then a dollar amount per student that is identified.
Thank you, Dr. Stevens.
Yes. Yes, yes. A few additional items for you. I do plan to, and I did put this in last week's update, that I'm going to be providing along with the team an update on our ESER plans. As you know, those are posted to our website with the CARES Act Plan, ESER 2 and ESER 3, the dollars that we have been allocated, as well as kind of where we are with the expenditures. We did also survey, and I shared those results with you, the families, to see what they would like to see some of those dollars allocated to. We're also currently looking at a meta-analysis by John Hattie specific to how dollars are spent with ESER and the biggest, the best practices that come to student-related results. So we're going to be taking that research and equating it to how we are allocating dollars specific to what are going to be data-driven results so that we can monitor our progress and have benchmarks for you. So that will be coming, but I anticipate probably more so maybe a January presentation because, of course, then that will give us another opportunity with NWEA to give you some of those benchmarks and have additional data for you. I wanted to share with you that I had reached out on behalf of the superintendents in the county to Dr. Stamp in the Porter County Health Department. I have asked for a meeting to be scheduled now that community spread is going in the right direction, as was our commitment to our community, that we would make certain that we reach back out when the time shows that the data is trending in the right direction to see what we can do about masks optional again. So that meeting is currently tentatively scheduled for this Friday at 8:30 in the morning with the superintendents. Also, I have reached out to Dr. Stamp and Connie Rudd, who oversees the nursing staff over there, and we're looking at a possible approval as early as November 4th for the vaccine for elementary students. So we will have a vaccine clinic for elementary students, and if families would like to come also, that's fine. Housed here at the Field House, we are going to do preapproval, or excuse me, preregistration so that they know right away how many vaccines to have on hand. So Dr. Stevens and I are working with our nurse practitioner, Sarah Berry, very closely, and as well Sally Clark to make sure that we have this all organized. I would like to congratulate Nate Thompson and Nick Palatano, who are receiving the Chamber of Commerce Community Award for their efforts with esports. As you know, this has been a great achievement. Many of students who have never been engaged or involved in an after-school activity have selected to join this club as the first thing that they've ever done. Also, we have many athletes have joined this club, and then just students from all paths and all walks of life. So it is a very significant undertaking, and it's really brought our school community together and helped find a niche for a lot of kids together that maybe would not have otherwise had that opportunity to meet and collaborate. So they will be receiving that community award on Friday, November 12th, at the Chamber event. I will make certain that we send that information out to you in the event that you would like to attend that dinner. Also, Educator of the Year this year will be Connie King, who has been a district teacher for a very long time. I see Trustee Wilkie shaking her head.
And the mother of one of our principals.
Mother of one of our principals, yes. And when her son Colton had Mrs. King, I was principal at Central, so very well-deserved lifelong educator. I want to share with you something exciting going on in the district. Tomorrow, we will be at Woodland Park's Sycamore Hall immediately following the school day. We have been studying some case studies on social justice and diversity in different scenarios, and we are going to be completing some study circle training with all of our leadership team. That's about 30 so of us. So we're going to be doing that tomorrow afternoon, and then launching study circles throughout all of our departments as well as our buildings. So it's a great, a great time to move that forward. We've been doing a lot of the groundwork that isn't always seen, but it's going to be a great initiative. And this book that we have found, the case studies are two and three pages long. It really takes you through scenarios that are specific to schools. A lot of times, that's the difficulty. Teachers and education personnel may not necessarily know how to respond in various situations because they don't always know the proper response in a school setting, and these are specific to school settings. So it's really helpful. As you're aware, the Fall Regional ISBA meeting is scheduled for November 9th. I know Mrs. Langren sent that out, if you haven't had a chance to respond to her yet. And that, again, will be at TBL's. I'm really excited to share with you that our partnership committee with Stronger Together, that initiative, we are launching our first major initiative this school year. We've added a meeting to take place November 3rd. We have a lot of community engagement between the schools, the city, the township, the Chamber of Commerce, the EDC, different business community, and I'm most excited, at this point in time, we have added, the YMCA has been included this whole time as well. Todd Willis is the president of the YMCA, who is Executive Director for Porter Stark. Dr. Stevens and I are working very collaboratively with Todd, and we're going to be launching a mental health first aid training, not only for adults, but also for students, to be able to recognize the signs of any type of mental stressor. We do a lot of suicide prevention training in our district that is required statutorily, but this is to recognize anxiety, signs of depression, just any type of situation that whether it be your neighbor, your mother, your cousin, your best friend, that you can recognize a sign and be able to be equipped with a skill set to get them some help. As we all know, the mental health professionals are extremely bombarded right now due to the pandemic, and because of that, the one way that they're finding a great opportunity is to train civilians in how to respond in a manner that's appropriate and help people to recognize that they might need some help. So of course, we are not training elementary children on that, and that would be a parent consent to be able to train them. So not only recognizing signs within yourself, but also helping to recognize signs within others. Also, congratulations to our marching band. They did a great job at State. This weekend, it was a great opportunity. I had went out with several others to, you know, send them off the morning that they were leaving for State. They did their little roll call, and it's just hilarious. They have these little skits they all put together to do their roll call by sections, and they are just a really energetic group. I felt very, very sorry for the adults who were on those buses because there's no way they stopped talking and laughing and singing the whole trip down. There was probably not a moment of silence. Couple parents were shocked that we do have the Wi-Fi on the buses because I don't know that they were aware of that to get some homework done. So I think they were looking forward to the ride and the company rather than, you know, buckling down and getting some homework done, but that's okay. We also had some additional weekend celebrations that will be highlighted for you in this week's update, and I apologize, I just did not write them all down, so, but I did specifically write down our marching band. That was a big one. Trunk or Treat was a huge success. I know my family and I, we had participated, and it was originally scheduled for 6:00 to 8:00. It was well after 9:00 PM that the last cars finally had come through. Families were extremely appreciative. They felt it was a great event. My hope is in the future that we can look at, through partnership committee, how do we bring things together like the gourds that the city is doing, and different things that Trustee Clancy is doing with the township? How do we bring some of these things collectively together to make even a larger impact? Then you think about the PTOs and having a fun fair prior to the evening events that can be housed at our Field House, and help just bring some things together for everyone to have a bigger turnout and have the amount of volunteers that you need to put on some of these things. Because what we all know is, it's a very small, select group in each of our organizations that's putting on a large, a large amount of activities for everyone. So how do we kind of pull that together? I shared with you Todd Willis, and I believe that's all I had for my update.
I got a couple of questions for you.
Sure.
You brought up ESER funds.
Yes.
And I know there's a lot of information and misinformation that's being spread out there relates to ESER. Are ESER funds tied in any way, shape, or form to wearing a mask?
No, they are not. They are not tied to wearing a mask. What ESER funds, now, the CARES Act dollars were tied to being able to purchase materials and PPE. We are expected in some way, shape, or form to utilize CDC guidelines. There is no indication of which CDC guidelines it is that we are absolutely, there is no requirement of you must mask to receive ESER funds. As a matter of fact, when our CARES Act Plan and ESER 2 and ESER 3 were approved by the board, we were not masking, and weren't masking for a very long time, and our ESER plans were already approved. So that is misinformation that is out there. It is not accurate. It is not why we are masking. It has nothing to do with the funding that Portage is receiving.
Very good.
The funding is strictly related to the compounded learning loss and the needs within the community for mental health support, academic support, and the funds necessary to make certain that schools can build back communities in partnership with the community itself.
Very good. Thank you. Another question, and again, and it relates with misinformation, or I believe it's misinformation, and I just think people just are, maybe they're not understanding. We obviously, somebody has put a form letter out that's been, several of them coming to the board, they're pretty much the same. And in that letter, it states that we received, the state gave us 11% additional funds. Is that accurate?
That is not accurate. We received in Portage Township for this particular school year, a 3% increase per student that is enrolled. So in the biennial budget, they did allocate what might be an 11% increase to Education Fund throughout the state of Indiana, but that doesn't mean Portage Township Schools receives 11% additional. Our additional contribution for this particular school year is 3%. With that in mind, Mr. Grant did educate me on this. It's about $300 per student in Portage that is additional. What we also know is that that, those dollars, when you have additional $300 per student, and less students last year, there is not a significant amount of increased new dollars in the district. It's just not that way. But yes, the additional allotment was 3%, not 11.
And what are we doing with those dollars?
All of those dollars have been allocated specifically to
Maybe we can't say.
Okay, to teacher bargaining, plus additional budgeted dollars as well.
Green light.
Yeah.
So.
Just making sure I was getting it.
Yeah, so all of those additional dollars from the state, the 3% are all going, trying to give that all to the teachers in
All of those and
Plus another 6.5%.
Plus another 6.5% of additional dollars.
Yes.
Okay, so I just want to clear that up because, and again, I know it's a form letter. A lot of people probably don't read it, and there's just, somebody says, hey, send these off, and they're sending it off, but
That's correct.
I did want to just make sure we publicly clarified that.
So where do you think that the perception of having 11%, where did that come, how did that come about?
I'd rather not talk about that.
I don't know.
Okay.
All right.
Until after bargaining.
Okay.
Okay. Anybody else have any questions for the superintendent? Thank you. That was a great report. Okay, next we move on to items not on the agenda. Does anyone have anything they'd like to discuss that is not on the agenda this evening? Does anyone have anything they'd like to discuss that is not on the agenda this evening? No? Did we get any public comment forms?
We did not.
Okay, so I don't need to read through our rules for public comment. Okay, so our next meeting is November the 8th at 5:00 PM. And then November the 9th, we have the ISBA meeting at Tebels. So if no one has anything else, this meeting is adjourned. Thank you.